Marty, Tuesday, April 25th. City Council, Stanford.
Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody can mic up. Any changes to the agenda?
No changes tonight to the agenda.
Need a motion and a second.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion, second any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Consent. I need a motion and a second.
I'll motion. Go ahead. Tell me for motion. I'll second.
Any discussion on consent items?
I have a couple of...
Go ahead.
Well, first a comment and then a couple of questions. So I did see that we had another large payment to our friends around the water treatment plan, so I'm glad to see that we have their full attention now. And I guess my comment is that because we went a long time without seeing anything, it just kind of makes my point that I think that we got set on a shelf someplace for quite a while. So, good to see that they're moving along, and I'll leave that for now. My other question, Marty, is around item D, the water tower repairs. And, you know, I'm certainly in favor of us doing that. The process sounds a little bit interesting to me, so somebody's actually going to get in a boat, float around inside the tank and...
Yep, and that's how they do...
Do this stuff.
Yeah, they do the inspections that way. You fill the tower up, and then you just drain it out through a hydrant. They can do a full inspection around the, inside the tower as they float down. And that's, that'd be the same way that they do this. They'll go around, it's only spot repairs, it's not, it's just taking the worst parts out of there. And so they just float down in the, in the, like a dinghy, basically, and take their tools with them, grind it off, and then patch it over as they go down.
So, I guess not our deal, sounds like an ocean nightmare to me, but confined space stuff and all that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the material they're putting on there, I know they listed it, but I'd never heard of it. I take it, I gotta believe it's pretty humid in there.
Yep.
Just sticks to anything? Is it like an alligator coating or something?
This is a specific coating for the inside of the tanks. I don't know what his makeup is, but I think it's been, they've been using it for five, 10 years now on these projects. And they find it's the best way to go. It's a quick way of doing the job, and it gives a long, a long repair to, you know, I think he's saying 10 to 15 years this stuff will last.
So, we'll be, at some point, it sounds like they'll be, I mean, they sort of work their way down by draining the tank and kind of working their boat around, and as the tank drains over time, how do we maintain pressure then without the, you know, I'm assuming the tank's offline then?
Yeah, the tank's offline, but we have the two wells now, and they've got VFDs in those. And so instead of operating from the, from a level in the tank, we will operate the system from, pressure from the VFDs. So they'll operate to keep the, the system pressure there between the two VFDs.
So as, like, the pressure drops in the pipe, the VFD picks up speed and it maintains pressure?
Yeah, and then it'll just, yeah, get the pressure back up to where it needs to be that way.
Sure. I guess the chief's not here, but I had a question, you know, do we have a plan for firefighting contingency? Because we won't have that reserve capacity if the tank is some form of empty during that time.
I think that the pumps, the wells are big enough that they will be able to contain the fire suppression flow as well. They're able to get the fire flow from that, because we've got 2,000 gallons a minute coming out of the two wells, so we should be able to contain any fire suppression from there.
Okay, as long as that's been taken into consideration, I guess, not for me to side out then. The last thing that I was thinking about is, don't we have a bunch of iron sitting in the bottom of that tank?
A bunch of what?
Iron.
Yeah, we will, there is some iron in the bottom of that tank. It's not due for cleaning until next year, because we cleaned it last year, 2022, that's when they did the report and the float down for this part of the project. So it's ready to be cleaned next year. So, yeah, that's where that will be. This is just one part of the repairs. There's some external stuff that they're doing, and some changes to the ladder gear that's coming away from walls on the inside of the tower. I wanted to get this part in front of you, so we can get it done before irrigation season starts.
And then, it mentions in there that at some point, major refurbishment will be needed. Do we know how far down the road that is?
I'm thinking another 10, 15 years, if we do these repairs now.
So that's not on our CIP yet?
Not yet. And I don't know what the cost of that will be, but I will find out what that's going to look like. It's probably going to be a pretty substantial number, because that'll be internal and outside full paint and refurbish.
Couple hundred grand or...
So, I won't even guess at that.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I wouldn't guess yet.
Do we know about how long this is going to take?
It will take, I think they, I think it's a five-day project. And then they will, I think that includes the, we have to do bacteria tests after they finish with their work, so we'll chlorinate the tower, flush that out, and then take a bacteria test, and that's a 24, overnight thing. And once that comes back clean, we can just put it back in service.
Okay, thank you.
And clearly, all the shavings and whatever they grind, it just sinks to the bottom and gets filtered out.
Yeah, it'll be flushed out when we flush the thing out, yeah.
Interesting. Hopefully they don't spit, but we don't know, I guess, or anything else.
Okay, let's move on. Are you good? Anybody else?
Pollution's pollution.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Consent's passed unanimously. On to open forum. Do we have anybody online?
We didn't get that thing picked yet.
If you have one person online, if you'd like to speak, please use the raise your hand function. They have now raised their hand, so we should be good to go.
All right. Staff, consult, council update, Zach?
Yes, sorry, I'm trying to minimize this stuff, trying to get back to square one. Yes, mayor and members of city council, I have a couple of updates for you tonight. Want to let you know, Gary is at the FDIC, which is the Fire Department Instructors Conference in Indianapolis. It is the largest one in the world, so he is there learning a whole bunch, bunch of stuff about fire instruction. He did want to provide an update to you guys about the concrete work that's been planned for two years now, so it was approved back in 2021 for the front and the rear of both fire stations, and that is going to be done next week, or the following week, but it's basically ASAP, which is good, and it is the same price, they're sticking with the same price that they gave us back in 2021, which is also very good.
Well, that was probably a good price in 2020.
Correct, probably.
So, question with that, do they, like, the concrete's got to set, right? So do they pull the trucks out, or do they, like, how do they manage that?
They will have to make sure they all work and pull them out if we need to have them set for time, or try to stack them so that we're able to do only one half at a time, so you can still get in and out.
Yep.
Fire chief will work through that process. If it screws up, I guess we're driving through concrete to get the stuff out, so I guess that's the answer.
Nope.
Just one, another update, next week starts the Step to a Challenge that was sent out by Teresa. She's been organizing that, so make sure to sign up. And information is on our website and our Facebook page for sending up the Step to a Challenge. I know Scott wants to sign up and show me how many steps he walks in a day.
That's right.
May 8th, next, would be next Monday, I'll take that back, not next Monday, the following Monday, but it is before the council meeting. There's an open house for the transportation realignment that we talked about, that is, and council chambers here from 5:30 to 7:30. It will also be live streamed, but did want to provide that information tonight. Flyers are going to go out tomorrow in the mail to be distributed to individuals that are impacted directly with that realignment.
Did we get a meeting notice for that?
As in council meeting?
Yeah, a notice.
No, but we can most certainly post for one.
It just, yeah.
Just because it...
It's easier for me, because then I can just...
Sure, okay, I'll send one. Yep.
You said it's 5:30 to 7:30 on the...
Yeah, 5:30, 7:30. So there'll be one presentation at 5:30, and then there'll basically just be questions after that until 7:30 or ish, until we can get out of here. We did have interviews, we have interviews this week for the socioplaner position, and then next week for the county technician position, which has been great. We did have 24 applicants for the county technician position, which is a lot of applicants, I'll tell you. A lot of applicants, which is good, but that's a lot.
So won't one of them do a planner?
I wish we could move one over to a planner, because we don't have any for the planner. So we're still working on some things. You'll likely see an update next meeting, trying to work through some things with Amy and what we want to do for that position, because with zero applications at this point, we don't have much of a choice. We have to either repost, or we're gonna have to post for a community director position or something along those lines, or continue to have Kevin here every Wednesday, because he loves coming here, I can just tell.
You want to promote to Dayton?
We've already asked him, trust me. And then, follow up from last meeting, you guys had two questions on expenditures that we could not answer. One of them was HOGO, the $5,000 charge on West French Lake Road. That is for concrete testing over the winter, so they have to test the concrete again before they pour pavement, so they did it right away, so they could fix anything before the pavement gets laid. I don't know exactly the date they're looking for, but my guess is in May for laying pavement. Jason, do you have an update on that at all for timing of West French Lake Road paving?
I don't, they were still thinking late May.
Okay.
So, I haven't heard an update or a confirmation, though.
Sure. And then the $2,300 charge you asked for electrical stuff is from Canexus, and that is for streetlight costs. My guess is that's Pineview Lane for streetlight costs. But it's probably a larger area than Pineview, but likely in and around Pineview for Canexus.
Like, repair or...
Nope, just for electricity.
Is there a sensor stuck?
Wow. That's for the year or for the...
No, I don't think that's for the year, I think that's for the month. At least that's from the back of what I could find, unless you know of anything else, Marty, then...
I can't.
I agree, when I looked at it, I said that's a large number, but...
Yeah, when I seen that, it stood out, only because I thought that was for the whole city or something.
It'd be happening every month, I mean, it would always be there.
Yep, correct. So it could be for meters, I know we had some meter issues that we were working through with River Hills, but I would assume they would have...
That's a different...
Yeah, correct, so, we, I could follow up directly with Canexus to figure out if it was something that was not billed for a while, because it could have been a few months, like nine months or more worth of information, but, like, we could follow up on that. We need to verify that information.
Are they the ones that replaced the poles? I know there was that one pole next to the roundabout that got knocked over.
No, they, there would be no charge for them to replace the streetlights up there. It's only the one, the big Cobra lights at the, the roundabout itself that there's a charge for, they're our responsibility. We have a maintenance contract with the, with the utility company for the actual decorative streetlights on the trail there, so they wouldn't charge us for that, we pay that monthly.
I will follow up with Canexus, and then I will find that on the weekly update, so you have the information on that. That's all I have, thank you.
All right.
Good evening, mayor and council, a couple of things I have. Wellhead Water Treatment, I did have the draft of the 90% plans, reviewed those with Blackham Beach last Friday, and there were some revisions and alterations to the plans. Once they're completed, the specs and the plans will be submitted to MDH for their review. That takes 10 to 15 days, depending on what staff availability is. I know the person that is working on this with us has had some medical leave, because he was working on well five as well, so it might have a little bit of a delay there, but we're hopeful that we're going to get those through in 10 to 15 days. We're pushing on with the 100% plans, and they should be ready to go out for bid early May, according to the schedule. And then hopefully we'll be getting the bid awarded somewhere around July, the 11th. So, it will be out to bid for a month, and then there's some time in there to review all the specifications and make sure the bids are fair. Well, five, we had the pre-con for that with Trout last Friday morning. That project is scheduled to start June 1st. Hennepin County project on Dayton River Road, they're still working on mid-July completion. Weekly meeting schedule updates are posted on the website every Tuesday, so they've just been done today. And their Facebook notification is sent out and directing people to the website where that's at. General things, streetlights on 146 in Cheshire Court, finally, all the paperwork has been finished. We, it's been an absolute nightmare. They didn't, they put the wrong addresses on the last set of paperwork they submit, so they had to go back, redo the addresses, and then resubmit. But I've been told that the Canexus crew is scheduled to complete the installation this week. It could be as early as tomorrow. So hopefully, fingers crossed, we'll get that done.
Thanks for diligence on that, Marty.
Yeah. Street sweeping was completed last week. Sports fields, I'm getting a lot of push, particularly from the CDA baseball and softball guys, they want to get out there as quick as they can. I know they're practicing at Dayton Elementary this week, they wanted to use McNeil, but McNeil is still a little bit soft, and with the rain coming this week, I don't think it's going to be ready until midweek next week. I've been keeping CDA informed of that, you know, what the situation is with that field. One other thing, May 6th is cleanup day for the city, and that runs from 9 o'clock to 1 o'clock. There is some information on the city website, I believe.
Evening, mayor, members of the council, just, the main update is rivers have crested, and they're starting to go down. Hopefully the rain doesn't affect it too much this weekend, but it doesn't seem like they're worried about it. Just want to give a shout out to all the staff from Police, Public Works, Fire Department, City Council, City Hall. We made it through it, and hopefully we don't have to do it again.
Oh, you will. Maybe, hopefully, years, but, yeah, you guys did, you kept on top of that, so I don't know that we provided much help here, but...
Thank you, mayor, members of the council, just a couple of quick updates. One, it's definitely, we're out of winter now, so we've been getting a lot more building permits, fence permits, and deck permits that have come in. I don't have exact numbers for April yet, but we're going to be well above what we were in March, just based on how many we already have had the first couple of weeks of April. We're working through the planning items that came through in March, Opus, Mini Storage and Semstone, that are all working through their approvals to then start construction on them. Opus being a comp plan amendment doesn't have approvals for that, but that's going through to the Met Council. And then there have been for the May deadline for planning applications, we received three applications already, and the deadline's not till next Monday, so we'll be reprocessing those through, and then those would come through in June unless they get delayed at all, and then they come through after that, so...
The French Lake Road improvements have started through the Greco site, so Greco's contractor is working on that one, still waiting on confirmation for the, all the other start dates in the area. So we have the Parkway extension with the Cubes Development, the 121st with the Capital Partners, the Troy Lane extension with MTL, and Inland, and the city project. We expect all of them will probably start late May.
There can't be any problems with West French Lake Road, I haven't heard anything, so I'm...
Hopefully not.
You know where I'm going with that.
I haven't heard anything either, so we're good with that.
The only other thing I've got is, and if you guys don't know, EDA made a motion to, or they approved by eight planters for Old Town Flower Pots. I directed seven people to get ahold of you, so seven of the eight flower pots should be spoken for.
I've got contact from three.
Okay. Halfway, almost halfway there. They're a pretty good size, yeah. We didn't get them yet, right?
There's a six-week delivery on them, they're ordered. Yes, six weeks to get them to us, yeah.
So maybe by July, well...
Yeah.
Do we have the patients picked out for those already?
I would have thought I would have just called them and have it here next week.
I guess they make them to order.
Really?
That's what it says.
So they're 24 by 24, 24, so two B's or two B's.
36 inches high, 33 inches high.
Oh, is it square?
Yep, square.
I'm surprised that they don't stock something like that.
Anything else?
None.
Other than kudos to you guys for the flood effort and staff, it was, it sounded like it went well, so...
I was hoping to fill up sandbag, but never got the call.
You could have taken my spot easily.
Go ahead.
Yeah, well, my thanks as well for not calling me, and the, and the good work there. I drove by there several times, and it looked like it was under control in the village there. So nice work with that, I'm glad it's going down. I know I've been watching it pretty close, not that it's going to bother my house, but I would like to retain my doc, some other things. So anyway, good work there. I wanted to give just a quick update. Zach and I attended the Three Rivers Park District State of the Parks meeting last week on the 19th, and just a couple of quick notes from that, just for information, their, their total operating budget is $82 million a year, you know, as compared to ours, which is what, 6.6?
6.5, yep.
6.5?
Yep.
So, big entity.
Which is funny, because if there's an emergency call inside Dayton, inside Three Rivers Park District, we respond to it, not them.
That's right, that's right. Well, they're, you know, they've got a big presence here in the city, and they need to be a big partner with us, so, one of the, well, I'll keep going with this, so 47.7 million of that comes from Hennepin County property taxes, I don't know where the rest comes from, other taxes.
Use your fees.
Grants, grants, and so on. Worked out by their figures to be, on a $375,000 home, $92 on your property taxes, and I'm not quite sure if that shows up under other, or metro special, or if that's part of the Hennepin County bite, or what that is, but...
I would, I would think it's probably under other, only because it's not affiliated directly with Hennepin County, it's underneath three different counties, so I would assume it's under other.
Yeah, well, we're paying it one way or another, so everybody's in for 100 bucks or so, or better, and, and, so that's where, that's where some of your money's going. One positive out of that, and Marty, I'd like for you to be able to say this someday, that, that they claim that they have no deferred maintenance at this time, anywhere in their system, buildings, trails, et cetera, so, something to shoot for.
Interesting, $82 million, right, Marty?
Right? You just increase your budget to 82, and you'll be good. We did make one, good contact during the meeting, Kelly and I, forgot her last name, or anything.
Grissom, yep.
Thank you. And I was curious about the West River Trail, of course, because I live on that site some day. But they, they seem to be pretty plugged in with the work the county's doing with, on the ravines, and I was happy to hear that they have at least got their plans kind of aligned with what the county's doing, so it's not gonna, they're not going to be building bridges or any trail while they're doing all that other work, but at least they're not making it worse, they're doing some prep work for them when the trail does ultimately come through there, so that was good to hear.
It's good that somebody's plugged in.
Yeah, they, they seem to have better information than we had on...
So Jennifer Stojna doesn't, she's not our rep anymore?
She is.
Oh, she is, yes.
Oh, she just wasn't there?
She was there, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Kelly is the director...
She's an employee, yes, she's the director of acquisition, basically, corporate acquisition.
Great. So that was a good connection to make, and I think we'll hear more from her in the, in the future. Zach's going to have coffee with her, that's what I heard. So anyway, that's what I got.
I only have one thing, which was, thank you everyone that came out to help fill sandbags, the police, fire, public works, and city employees that came out, it was nice to meet Zach's wife and kids, Amy's kids, that was fun. And then also thanks to the city's leadership and continued monitoring the updates that we got. Paul, thank you very much for those regular updates, it was helpful, so thank you for that. And good work. That's all I have.
All right. Onto business. Item E, accepting of goals and initiatives.
Yes, mayors, mayor and members of council, we did this goal-setting session discussion back in the beginning of March. It's been a big hectic around City Hall since then, so I did my best to try to get as many goals and initiatives that you guys put on that piece of paper, which is basically all of these, and then try to get some structure of what kind of areas they sit underneath, and then some deadlines of when we'd like to see them done. Again, these were goals that were brought up during that goal-setting session, if you'd like to change anything, want to adjust any initiatives, whatever else, I'm happy to do that. This'll obviously be an annual thing, but it's something that we want to make sure we continue to do and monitor, so happy to make any adjustments, but otherwise just looking for acceptance tonight at the end of our discussion.
Just, you want to vote, or you just want to...
Yep, yep. If you guys want, except if you guys want to change anything, happy to change it, and then...
Well, let's take motion.
Motion.
Second. Now we can discuss. Anybody got anything?
I do, not a lot, fortunately, but under goal number two, under the build quality infrastructure, complete a pavement management study end of '23, and I thought we had talked about trying to get that in time so that we could use it for some budgeting this fall.
Oh, yeah, yep, so I think they, I don't know exactly when they started it.
They've done the assessment, so they've collected all the data.
Okay.
So they'll be building the system.
I thought I saw that truck driving out, like a van bucket thing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it took them a three days.
Okay.
So, the only reason I put end of '23 is so we can have them done by a date, a kind of, just a year date thing, doesn't mean that it won't be done in June of '23, it just means by the end of '23 we're going to have it done, so...
Okay, good, long as we're on...
It is, it is moving forward, and they did the assessment, I think I said, I think I saw it was like a white conversion van truck with a bunch of sirens on it.
Stuff all over the place.
Yeah. Okay, cool.
Makes it look good, anyway. Like, any surprises, or any, any...
Not until the system's built and we start manipulating to see what the potential would be.
Okay, so it kind of has to be all collated and done before you can even really...
Yeah.
There's data gathering through that process, how they're going to manipulate data.
Yeah, they'll inform the system, and then they'll structure everything and put the decisions in, so...
Edwin Martin.
Go ahead.
All right, under the next group, you know, planning ahead to manage thoughtful development, goal two there, comp plan updates, land use staging plan, and transportation end of '24. Seemed like we were talking about trying to get that done sooner than that.
I can most certainly do that. It's gonna, the only reason I wrote end of '24 is because it's probably not going to be done by end of '23, only because we need to have a six-month review by Met Council. So with their review of being six months and us being in the end of April already, transportation one, that should be minimal. It's the land use and staging plan, stuff that I'm more concerned about, the review time and making sure we're all on the same page and stuff, so...
Maybe, maybe...
I'm happy to put middle of '24, beginning of '24...
Well, so maybe we, we don't, I mean, this is a goal, so it isn't necessarily a goal for the Met Council, it's a goal for us, and so maybe instead of worrying about when they approve it, then maybe when we get our work done?
Sure. You can easily change it, end of '23 is fine. That's an easy change for me.
Okay, yeah, I'd be cool with that.
Yeah, I like some of that. Okay?
I feel it's achievable. I'm just wondering how, like, with, without the planner or anything like that, I mean, does it seem like it...
I mean... I mean.
We're all gonna become planners.
Yeah.
He's sitting right over there.
Yep, he's right there.
We have a special for May 4th session just to talk about it, so.
That's correct.
All right.
May 4th, huh?
Star Wars Day.
Well, we got a date now, anyway.
Come dressed up. Yeah, you said you were gonna be there.
Absolutely.
Any more? Anybody else have anything? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
I will make that change and then send you guys out an updated one to see you have that. Thank you very much.
Okay, item F.
Yes, discussion on Heritage Day. We, as staff, always want to make sure we're planning and ahead a little bit. We haven't heard anything from Heritage Day, Foundation, Lions, so on and so forth. Based on our experience last year, we're just trying to make sure that we're knowing what's going on. If we're missing something, we want to make sure we're unaware of it. And then try to figure out how we want to move and use this process moving forward of how the city wants to operate with Heritage Day. If we want to be a partner with this thing, do we want to be involved with the process? Do we want to just give them money? What is the idea from the council's perspective of Heritage Day? Only because, like I said, last year, there was a significant amount of time spent by, I know Marty, Teresa, and some other staff of trying to help plan for things, and yet still at the end it was kind of a show of trying to get everything organized and set up. I know some of us within city staff really like to have things planned out, and it's tough when it's not planned out well. So we want to make sure we're ahead of the game versus trying to catch up at the end.
So my understanding is the Lions have talked to Teresa? Is that?
I think maybe a preliminary discussion, but I don't know about in total things. Like I said, it's just from what I, I just want to make sure that we know what our role is as the city. If we're supposed to be involved in the process, are we not supposed to be involved? Are we just gonna give the money?
Yeah, I think historically, personally, I think we, our city should be involved in a lot of, in a lot of these events, like the Buns events as best we can. I mean, we, you know, like the pump match thing, they don't ask much of us. But it just seems like we should be promoting and trying to improve, help improve these events.
Correct, yep, I concur. We want to see this thing succeed and grow, and grow to be something larger than what it is today. And we don't know how to facilitate that as the city. That's what we struggle at, is we don't want to be the ones that are taking stuff away and feeling like we're being the, you know, decision makers. Because we don't want to be that person, but if that's what we need to be, then we will. It's just, again, it's, we're trying to figure out our place in this whole process, and if it's not the place that we need to be, then we want to make sure that we're not stepping on toes. We're just basically doing what we're asked to do. We don't want to just be there just to be there, and that doesn't help anybody when we spend a bunch of time on stuff and then nothing happens, so.
Well, if it's coordination effort between the Lions and the DCF and the city, I will push the Lions and get some things started. So, or get something apparently more in-depth than what's already been. I thought they had Matt.
I don't think so. I don't know, Marty, are you aware? I'm not aware of the meeting. And I think there might have been some emails or something exchanged, but that was about it, of trying to get something scheduled, but I don't know for sure. And this event seems to come up very quickly on us every year. By the time summer gets through, it's like, oh, yeah, now it's September and we need to plan this thing.
We should do this.
And so that's.
Usually don't start till like July 5th or so.
Or August.
That's way back.
The big thing there is usually like getting the band on board, but.
Correct.
Okay.
Can I ask a question as the new guy?
Needs to happen soon.
Yep.
I also like, I'd like to have it all planned. Six months ago would be best.
Correct, yeah. We want to see it grow, so if we're here to be happy with ideas, we're happy to help as the city, but we also don't want to just say that we're here just to give our time and that's it, and then we're not really giving anything. We're just more or less here.
Yep. Okay.
So I guess, as the new guy and someone who had gone through this before, I always assumed the city put on Heritage Days. It sounds like that's not the case?
No.
Okay.
Dayton Community Foundation.
Okay.
I mean, years and years ago, it was just a small group that put it, kind of kept it going and got it going.
It was, it has a history of. It was a separate committee, and somehow, and a lot of times, I think the Lions got the city involved, and it was kind of this not very well-coordinated activity.
Okay.
But yeah, it was never a city event, but.
Is there, again, I don't know, so I'm just asking, is there a reason we don't have like a, like we have an EDA and a parks committee and a planning committee? We don't have that, just as like a committee that's like part of the city? Is there a reason it's separate? Like, and maybe this is all the cities do it. I really don't know. I was just surprised.
To some extent, it's, and maybe you know a little bit more, but it's partially illegal for cities to do this stuff.
Oh.
But I think if they call it a, I think it's a music celebration, I don't remember. I read the statute like two years ago.
If it's a festival for the heritage of the city, Father Hennepin Days would be Champlin's Heritage Day thing. Rock and Rogers would be Rogers' Day thing. If it's related to a festival to celebrate the city's heritage and where it came from, that is allowed by state statute to be budgeted for and expended on.
Right. So there's some, and somehow, what's it, Shed Fest, is that what they call it?
Champlin does that.
There's no heritage there, but I think there's an art.
Correct.
Honored to the statute. And they basically, I think the city runs the whole thing, don't they?
I don't know. I never heard back. So I did call Champlin to figure out, they did theirs.
Yeah.
I never heard back. I did hear from Rogers that they just give a dollar amount every year.
That's the Lions there.
And they just say the Lions put the whole thing on, and they give five grand or something.
This is their ask.
Yep, we give $5,000 worth of time and supplies and whatever the city does. If they go over that, so say the Lions need more time, they will pay the city back five thousand, or anything over five grand. They also pay for all of the police reserve time. So they do that directly, no matter if it's coming out of the five grand or not. The Lions pays back all the police reserve time, anything on top of that. And I'm choosing five grand as a number. It could be seven or 10 or whatever it is. How much does the city budget every year for this? Zero dollars. So that's why, that's my question as well, as I'm posing towards budget season.
It's been that way.
Yes.
I thought last year was 10 grand.
Nope. 10 grand was for the Salt Diamond, or the Diamond Lake improvements.
That was for the water treatment.
Yes, correct.
No, this has always been basically just time.
Yep.
Yeah.
The city's supposed to pay for that time, which is why.
I know, and I thought that Teresa's activity budget had.
She just put a value to like Marty's, to people's time and Phil's time. They just put a value to that, so you're not actually.
Because someone has to actually pay those people, so there's that extra money that goes to the door, right? I'm not, okay.
I mean, they're being paid anyway, and I mean, it's not extra money.
Well, it can be, but yeah.
It's technically considered extra money because they wouldn't normally be here. If heritage didn't exist, they wouldn't be here.
It's like an overtime.
On a Saturday, we're paying them overtime to be here. That's correct, or comp time, or whatever you want to call it.
But then there's the equipment as well.
There's the equipment, and there's the barriers, and the police time, and all this stuff.
So there's all that.
I don't remember exactly how much police time we spent last year, but for hours, four thousand.
I want to say she had a budget there of 6,700 rings a bell.
Yeah, I don't remember what it was, but I thought there was something in there.
That value was placed on it.
Yeah, but like I, yeah.
But it's not, it's not coming out of the budget.
And I think, and, you know, the, like I said, you know, the Buns cost the city some money, and there's probably gonna be another music festival this fall by the Lions. We'll see.
Yeah, do you charge them time for Buns, for example, chief?
In the beginning, we were charging time, and they were paying for the officers' time to be there.
Okay.
And then the city council decided that we're all nonprofits, we weren't gonna charge.
Yeah, sure.
That was a couple of years back.
Sure.
Well, even like the permit too, I mean, or something like that. Yeah, I think we waived the permit as well.
Yeah, so like I said, it's.
I've got one more question, again, just because I don't know. How do we get the county to let us close the road? Like, we can't get them to do anything, but somehow, like, we can't paint stripes on a road to cross into the park reserve, but we can close a road for a day?
That's just something that happens.
We don't tell them. They don't tell us. They close out the roads either, so. Okay, I, okay, sounds good. Thank you for humoring my new guy questions. I appreciate it. Yeah, so.
I don't disagree. I mean, to me, the city could be involved. I mean, most cities do.
So, yeah, so I guess, but I can.
Yeah, I just want to know what you, what the council wants us to be involved with. If you want us to be involved in the decision-making and stuff, and I know that, I don't know how well it went last year. I could probably lean on Marty more for how it went. I wasn't involved in the process last year of the meetings that were up to, you know, up to the point. But I've heard from multiple staff, it was like, basically just not funded or not planned well, and it's just kind of thrown together, and we want to be able to have more people there and better planning and better processes.
Well, I think, so there's probably areas to improve. I mean, to me, this is kind of an negotiation with the Lions and Teresa's the front person. Marty, you have a lot to do with this. But I know that there were problems with when the meetings were and how often they were, and, but, you know, I mean, without direction.
The hope is to have this stuff planned out six months ahead of time, so we can really, you know, really promote it and build it up and really show what's going on. And that's why, I think that's why city staff really struggles, is because we're all planners here, and it's just kind of our, if we don't have it planned out, there's no way anybody's gonna cope with it, so.
Even at the John Hoffman event a few weeks ago, they were passing around a flyer with all the city, the dates for all the city's events, and we were the only one that didn't have a date.
Correct.
TBDs. That makes sense. Everyone else is planning out that far.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that's why it's just trying to figure out, how do we, how do we make this a bigger event, or if we don't want to make it a bigger event, then we just leave it as it is?
Yep.
Part of the thing is, there's the old deal is Heritage Days is in Old Town. You know, we kind of tried to start something in Stevens, so you're separating the two, and there's a little animosity.
Like, what's the Stevens, like the music thing, or?
The music thing.
Yeah, okay. Because like the fireworks thing, like that's, like when you do that for Heritage Day, that's kind of, you do that set with like Saturday or something, and like Sundays is the parade. It's like, it's at two different locations, kind of logistically, kind of, I don't know. I just, to your point, it's the planning, and then who steps up to do that?
Yeah, and we want to make sure that we're here and we're present and we're helping with what we need to help with. If we're not needed, then we don't want to be involved, and then you can just do whatever you want. And by, I mean you, I mean, the Foundation and the Lions and stuff can do whatever they want to do, and that's great.
If it's meetings, like, go ahead.
No, sorry.
I was gonna say, if it's meetings, then like that is like kind of the hiccup that, to start this process, like, what do they need? What do you need for the meetings? I guess it's kind of, I have more questions than I have resolutions at this point. It's just like, I'd like to, I'd like the city to be more involved, myself, you know, but what does that look like? So I'd like to ask the DCF and the Lions, you know, like, how do we make that work?
The faster we can get the armadillos at Stevens, the better.
The, speaking of location, can the historic village, I mean, if we're coming up on 10,000 people, even half of them showed up, do we really have the ability to get them down there for the parade?
It kind of self-limits to some extent.
Yeah.
It does, and, and I think everybody knows that.
Okay.
I think, my, Scott kind of pointed this out, that we are limited in the old village. And so what the Lions have kind of decided on is we'll still have something down there, but it would be nice to move something else out to what's supposed to be our premier park, which is Stevens. So that's what we started last year.
And that was the music and stuff like that?
Two years ago.
The fireworks.
Last year we had to have it here. Two years ago was the fireworks.
Right, so.
Stevens was getting work last year, and we couldn't do it there.
Okay.
And that should be done this year.
Right, so it's, yeah, it's definitely limited, and it's not gonna expand downtown because it can't.
It can't get much bigger.
It's, I was gonna say, like, I mean, I was there last year, it felt, the streets were lined, I mean, where we had the parade, and so if we can start getting more people that want to show up to that, we're limiting that, which I don't know, I mean, every parade gets that way, right? I mean, adventure's only so much space, you gotta make it longer, but it just feels like just getting access to there with the road being closed and then parking, all that kind of stuff. It seems limiting just because of locale, not because we don't have enough street length, if that makes sense.
But that event, I mean, it's been here for 45 years. People like it. So I think you gotta keep that part, and then just expand it at your premier park.
I don't know. I'm not an event planner. I was just curious, because you brought up the location, if that was what our thoughts were.
I, yeah. And I think, I think at some point, the parade's probably gonna have to move.
Oh, okay.
It has been in a different spot. It was on, yeah, because it's one of the shortest parade routes, I think, of all the cities. And we can't get, I mean, some of the bands, the marching bands that we get can't even do their whole routine.
Oh, really?
So, yeah.
Wow.
So it, so, yeah.
So it needs some deep discussion.
Well, yeah, if you could facilitate, I'm happy to meet and go through things and see how we can make it better or bigger, or just leave it as it is, or whatever.
Yeah.
And that's why the item's on the agenda, and again, why we posit, because chief has the most experience that we have any of us trying to, in dealing with, in going with Heritage Days, so. Anything you want to add, then, sir? Okay.
No.
Well, we waited for him to be here, so I figured we should at least ask him.
I want to, only because if there was something to do with history or whatever else, I would rely on the chief more than myself.
The only thing, the only problem with the location that it's currently at is we're limited on road closures. If it moved to a different location on a city street, we could close that road all day long if we had doing, just, it would make it a lot more easier for us, along with less staffing for us when it happens like that.
And then can we make sure that we plan a budget for that this year for next year? Correct, yeah. So that's my next, yeah, that was my question to us. And maybe this comes along with, after we talk with the Lions, it comes back and says, okay, in this year's budget, we have to budget for X number of dollars, so we know how much we're spending on this thing, as in city time. Because time, or overtime, or barriers, or whatever, is still stuff that goes out of city budget for general fund dollars.
And I don't know if she's, so Teresa's talked at all, so she has this thing the Friday night before at Stevens, or at?
Yep.
Yeah.
It's kind of been pushed, yep.
Yeah, and so I don't know if she's gonna expand that, or I think you're right. I think we should probably find out after they've talked and hammered that out.
Sure, okay.
Have more information.
That sounds like the sooner the better on that, right? Correct, yeah. The view would be sooner the better, so we can actually advertise for dates, and because I don't know if date's been chosen yet, I'll be honest.
It'll be the third weekend.
Third weekend of September is when, that's when Heritage is, third Saturday.
All right. Okay, item, item G. Accessory dwelling unit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The application before you tonight is the Burnham interim use permit. The applicant's name is Brian Burnham. They're located at 14080 Kingsview Lane, which on the screen is the one in the corner, the corner lot on the east side of Kingsview. It's on the intersection of Diamond Lake Road and Kingsview. It's a 4.35 acre site, guided low-density residential, as you can see in the bottom image, and zone A1 agricultural in the top image. It is in the 2030 Musa staging area as well. Here's the site plan. The accessory dwelling unit is the 24 by 25 structure shown on the drawing, which is attached to an 88 by 40 or a 3,520 square foot accessory building, shown attached to the ADU. This is all located to the rear of the home, with the main frontage being off Kingsview, with the home and the existing shed that they've got on that side. And as far as accessory structures, you know, the number of structures on the site, A1 district has no maximum structure size, so the only limiting factor for accessory structures is the 10% impervious surface maximum, which they are close to but under with this. So they did provide measurements as part of that, that was in the packet, on, you know, the existing home, the existing structure, the new structures, any other impervious surfaces being pavements, you know, anything like that on site. So the accessory dwelling unit is proposed to use metal siding and a metal roof. The style, at least in the colors, appears to match the principal structure, so one of the conditions of an accessory dwelling unit is that it matches or is compatible with the principal structure on site, so it matches the home. So they did provide that the colors match roughly with what the home is, but a condition was just added to verify as the final design hasn't been done on the entire structure to know, does everything match, is it compatible? So that'll be done with the building permit. As far as the floor plans, left side is the main level floor plan, right side is the upper level floor plan. You can see the large vacant area is the garage area, I mean, storage for whatever, boats, trailers, vehicles, things like that. And then the accessory dwelling unit being the extension off on the southeast or bottom-left corner, has living room, upstairs, kitchen, bedrooms, everything that would be in a living unit. It is 600 square feet in just floor area for one, for the single foundation, but the entire unit is 1,200 square feet. With one with the open floor on the top is a little less, just because it has an open, open to below, so essentially like a skylight area. And then there is a loft in the actual garage area. So as part of interim use permits, no rental licenses allowed for the ADU, so you can't rent out the accessory dwelling unit. The condition is that the interim use permit expires when ownership of the parcel changes, and that wouldn't require you to tear down the accessory dwelling unit. You just couldn't commence and have someone live there until the new owner of the property essentially. commence and have someone live there until the new owner of the property essentially came back in for a interim use permit. And so they'd have to notify us if ownership changed the parcel, so if there's a sale, they'd have to notify the city, that's a condition of the approval as well, that they notify, and then when the ownership would change, the new owner would then just have to come in for an interim use permit and could then commence the same use along, as long as it still met all the conditions of an interim use permit. So ADUs can only be occupied by family members or extended family members, um, and no commercial operations, home businesses, or home occupations can be conducted within that accessory dwelling unit. So you can't run like a mechanic shop or anything like that out of there. Planning Commission did review this with a public hearing at their April 6 meeting and recommended the city council approve the application for all, there was one member vacant, or absent, so that was a unanimous, um, recommendation for approval. Uh, so with that, there is a resolution before you, and you have the option to adopt Resolution 16-2023, or to deny Resolution 16-2023 with findings.
So.
Oh, second.
Okay, so we got a motion in a second. Any discussion? I have, I have some, but.
I just have some questions.
Go ahead.
I believe the applicant is online, I'm not sure, let me just check quick though.
Just so they were going to, but I don't know if they actually joined.
They are online, so if we do have questions directly for the applicant, they can.
I don't, I don't have questions for the applicant, I just have some, some general questions, I, I have no problem with this, I think it's great they're doing this, sounds like they're right through it, help family out, family's important, I think that's great. My question is, with, why is it not a conditional use permit, and why is it a, an interim use permit? Like, it seems, because, that'd be my first question.
The, the thought process is basically an interim use permit doesn't extend forever, like a conditional use permit, so you have natural built-in check-ins, so if it's only, you know, in 10 years, they decide to sell the property, it changes hands, the city basically is granting the new interim use permit for the next owner, gets to essentially check that everything's still in compliance, that you're not running a business out of there, that the home is still in, a workman-like, or the building is still a bit like up to dwelling unit code and building code, and that they're, basically, the unit's still functioning as a whole. That's really the only difference in between a conditional use from an interim use permit, is because there's a sunset clause on that interim use, and so.
But the person that buys this home, when this house eventually, eventually this home will change hands.
Yep.
Down the road, are they required to disclose that in order to use this building to house someone in there, they're gonna need to come to the city and get an interim use permit, they have to disclose that as part of the sales agreement?
They have to notify the city, whether that's the, the, the sales agent or the current owner, they're obligated to, now, that's in the resolution.
But that's the city, not the, not the new buyer. Not the new buy, because my concern is, is that.
Somebody comes in.
Somebody buys this thinking that they're getting this thing that they can put their parents in, right?
Yep.
And then they realize they can't do that, so they get the new interim use permit, and then for whatever reason they come in and someone says no, right? So, but it just, I'm curious if, if the current owner is required to disclose to the new purchaser when it gets sold, that you're gonna have to get in a new interim use permit as part of this, to use that building to live people in?
I don't know if it would be disclosed, I mean.
Yeah, it would, so, part of the sale process, the realtor is supposed to ask for any open permits or any permits that are on the property.
Okay.
This would have a permit on it, and that resolution would be attached to the permit. So the, again, the due diligence, if they're done correctly, should be done, yes.
And that's what I.
If it's not done, then.
I'm just trying to look down the road and avoid a situation where someone comes in angry, finally they have to do this, didn't think they had to, why didn't we do it this way? Like, it just.
Yeah, so typically, we, we do get a lot of requests in City Hall of, okay, we're gonna sell this property, is there any open permits or any permits that were issued previously on this property? And we'll say, yep, there was a siding one, there's a window one, there's this, and then they'll, they'll ask for backup if there is anything on any one of those, they are allowed to ask for backup, and we'll take advantage of that.
Okay.
So did we instigate this type of use or a permit, or?
That was in the code.
Yeah, it's in the code, I don't know exactly when it was adopted.
So, it would have been.
2018 or something.
2019, so, and there was discussion about IUP and CUP, and I hate IUPs, hate them with a passion.
Yeah, okay.
Because there's no guarantee that a new owner is gonna come in and get that approved.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Or, or their thought is, is like, oh, look at this nice big building on the back, I can operate a business out of here, and that's not part of the disclosed agreement, and so they go through all this work.
Yeah.
Buy this, come to find out that they can't do it, and their only option is tear it down.
So I don't have any problem on this one, because it is what it is now.
Right.
I guess what I'm trying to get to is, is this the right thing for future permits?
Yeah.
Or should it be a CUP? And I don't know the answer, I have.
It makes it simpler to me if it's just a CUP.
I, I think so too, but that's why I'm putting it up there, I, I don't know what we do about it, so.
So, on a CUP, we still have requirements. So let's say somebody comes in with an IUP. How do we know they're in compliance?
That was, to your point, that was, that was a question that I had too, it was just like, how do you do your checks and balances on something like that?
I don't think, yeah, I don't.
Is it a physical inspection or?
Is it something?
That's, is that?
We're not.
Metro West?
Metro West will come in and make sure that it's per code, but I don't know that they'll say, you know, hmm, what's, why do you have pallet stacked up? And, yeah, I, I don't know that, I don't know. And my problem with CUPs or IUPs, and we did the same thing with, with some of the horse owners about 20 years ago on, on, uh, Salt Diamond here. Their permits were, it was pushed to make them an IUP. Well, the problem with IUPs is when you sell the property, you can't tell that person, you can use this.
Yeah.
But you can tell that person, go into City Hall and see if they let you use this.
If they're nice enough even to tell you that, they could just not tell you anything and inspire beware.
They may not tell you anything, it may be, it may be a new council comes in and says, we don't like these things, and no, you can't have an IUP. I, I don't like them, I, I never have, and I didn't like it when we passed this.
I would rather this be a CUP, but I, for, for sake of the homeowner, I, I don't want to make them go through that, because now they're trying to get things moving, and time is short to get construction done in the summer Minnesota, so I, I, I don't, I'm all for letting this person forward, I know he's on the phone, so I'll make sure he knows that.
I suspect we could switch this to a CUP. And I.
Okay.
To be honest, I, I can see there being a, a somewhat of a market for these too, I mean, if you have a.
Don't disagree.
A property that has.
It's something I plan on doing at some point in my life as well, so I mean, that's why.
Granny pot, or whatever you want to call it.
What's the best way to?
How you guys doing?
Yeah, we're just trying to figure out when it was adopted, and it was in 2019.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
For it to be an IUP and not a CUP, because they, you could have amended it to allow it to be a CUP at that time.
We didn't have the votes.
Didn't have a vote.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so, the way to fix it would be that you could now make, we could ask for an ordinance update, a code update, that there are public hearing on it, and then.
Sure.
And then vote on it, and you could adjust it from being an IUP to a CUP, if that's what you want to do. That would be something, the direction of council would need, be needed for that.
Well, would that do the application?
That was, Planning Commission did discuss it and ultimately recommended approval of the IUP, because the, changing it to a CUP would slow down the process for them, because we couldn't approve it until that actual change happened.
That discussion happened.
And after the rest of public hearing, and draft the ordinance, and make the change, and bring it back to you, so it'd just delay them by 60 days or maybe more, depending on.
So let's not do that.
Let's not do that now.
Let him go forward with what he's doing, and let's, let's change it.
But the other side of the coin is, is we should have that later, we should have the discussion later.
Are we able to make it retroactive in any way? So they would have to come back through the process to get to the amendment.
Well, they, they, if they wanted a change, if they're happy with the IUP.
Would be good for them, for the life of them owning the structure, because they would have already been granted approval, so they wouldn't have to come back and get a CUP.
Wouldn't have to.
But the next owner, instead of coming back to get an IUP, would just come and get a CUP, and then that would carry forward for the future.
What's a CUP cost for us to walk through? Is it kind of priced?
For an application?